Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen?
Here.
LaFleur?
Here.
Ms. Stravich?
Here.
Reindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Good to see everybody's here tonight. We need the approval of minutes of the quarterly roundtable meeting held on October 16th. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll support it.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Be not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also need to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on the same date. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on those minutes? Be not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We go on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody would like to address the city council and have comments, we ask you to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the clerk, and try to hold it within three minutes.
My name's Charles Jowzwick. I live on Grove, over by the car wash. I'm in the second block, on the north side, I guess I would. But I've... I've been there 11 years, in this house. And I've got along great with my neighbor for 10 years. I mean, we have more barbecues and everything else. Well, he got sick. His son got kicked out of his house and moved into his house with his girlfriend. And they moved him there three and a half months before Stan was living with... The guy that owned the house, he was living with his sister because he was sick. He couldn't walk straight. And they lived there three and a half months before he moved back into the house. And they told the police they didn't. They just moved in to take care of him. And I've got... Back behind my house, there is... A ditch that goes from my backyard all the way to almost the sidewalk. There's a drain. And she takes all her branches and all her leaves. That's her throwing branches. Oh, she's flipping me off there. She's blowing her leaves, filling that up. This is... She hired... A guy that measures your lot.
Surveyor?
Surveyor. And the guy said, "The owner of the house didn't even call me." And the police...
Sir, can you apologize, but just so that people on the video can hear, could you speak into the microphone?
The owner of the house didn't even call this guy to get a survey. And she doesn't... She just... She doesn't even pay rent there. And I want something done about this. And I was... This year is the first year I put up the fence. And I've got four... Three... I got three broken hair vertebrares in my back, three in my neck. And the police said I was... For 10 years, I was blowing them back across to the yard, to his yard. And they took care of it, you know? And she's just calling the police every time she comes there. I want something done about it. And well, when the police came, why didn't they go to the... And talk to the owner of the house? Instead of listening to somebody that doesn't even pay rent? Because he lives there.
But something that... It sounds more like a civil matter than something that we can deal with, but I'm sure...
Police told me to come to you.
Pardon me?
The police told me to come to you.
To the city council?
Yep.
Okay, so you're here. We hear you. We, I believe, would have our city manager look into this a little bit further to find out if there's anything that we can do. John, do you have something?
Yeah, certainly. And I would concur, Mr. Mayor. The police chief did talk to me about this. We have reached out to the city attorney. We've been having some phone calls, but haven't had a chance to have both the chief of police, myself, and the city attorney on the same phone call. We're hoping to have that rectified in the next day or two. And, you know, just to, as the mayor said, figure out, is this a police matter or a civil matter? And then be able to advise the residents whichever direction our attorney gives us advice on. So it's not that we have finished with looking into this issue. It's just a little matter of time getting kind of the right people on the phone conversation so we get some legal advice on your situation.
But every time the police come there, they're on their side. And they're the ones doing the wrong. On the bad guy. You know, and his son lives there too, which has warrants.
Okay, that's not... We don't want to get into that, sir. That's not something that we want to hear here at this table. Well, we're going to have our city manager look into this. He is the chief's boss. They will work on this. He's already told you, we have contacted our attorney evidently because we never had this complaint brought to the city before. We don't know what the actual law is. I would tend to say that it's a civil matter and it's... We have nothing to do with property lines or who's blowing whose leaves onto whose property or anything else normally. We don't know for a fact. Maybe there is case law on this. We are willing to look into that further for you. Okay? And that's all we can do at this point. We're here to conduct the business of the city that we've been elected to do. Administration will look into your complaint through our concern. Understood?
The only thing I don't understand is... You don't want to get into warrants, but the police come to my house six times after my son dies and ask if he's there. I brought him out in his box.
Mm-hmm.
And go, "Here, here he is. You want to put cuss on him?"
Mm-hmm.
What are you guys, stupid?
I don't think so. I think that's probably enough, sir. That's probably enough. You've exceeded your three minutes. Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else I'd like to address city council this evening? We will move on. Adoption of the agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City council, any changes? Be in order, a motion except the agenda as presented, be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Be not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There's no discussion on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to... For consideration, this evening, we have six. The first one being presentation and approval of the city audit. Mr. City Manager?
The council is scheduled to receive a presentation from the city auditors, Plant Moran, on the fiscal year 2022-23 audit. The auditors are able to give an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that can be provided. Keith Shemansky and Veronica Trowzan are here tonight to present the audit. And then Veronica handed out some of the charts and graphs that she'll be going over with you tonight.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Nice to be with you again. Happy to say that, once again, we've been accustomed to delivering rather straightforward audit reviews and nothing but good news report. And that's largely the case we have here today again. We, once again, worked through the audit of the city for June 30, 2023. We are issuing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's a clean audit report and the highest level of assurance that we can provide. We're going to briefly go through some of the financial highlights for the year. I'll close things out, going over our end of audit letter addressed to city council. And then we'd be happy to take any questions from city council. So with that, rather than going through the entire 50-page financial statement document, I'm going to turn it over to Veronica to go through the graph package you have in front of you. And I will take it back from there.
Keith? Good evening. So if you want to flip to the first actual page of the slide deck here, the first thing that I want to cover as the first highlight from the financial statements is related to the general fund revenue. So this graph shows the current year general fund revenue as well as the past four fiscal years of revenue. This year's revenue, you'll see, is quite a bit larger than last year's revenue. And the primary reason for that increase this year is related to the recognition of some of the ARPA funding that was previously received. So you'll see that portion of revenue is included in the line item called locally raised. So the increase in the locally raised line item is specifically related to ARPA. You'll see, again, in 2024, the remaining ARPA revenue that wasn't spent this year, that will be recognized in 2024. The other item I wanted to point out before moving into general fund expenditures is that the largest revenue source that you'll see from the general fund is property tax revenue. So the reason I wanted to point that out is because, as you all know, your property tax revenue is capped every year. So this coming fiscal year will be the first year where inflation will be higher than the 5% cap that you're allowed to levy on property taxes. So just wanted to point that out as you're looking at your property tax revenue and the modest increases that you see year after year. That's pretty common, and you will see that again in 2024. So the next slide in here is looking at general fund expenditures. The general fund expenditures are laid out in the exact same way as you saw the property tax revenue. And again, you'll see an increase in this year's expenditures. Most of the categories of the general fund expenditures had modest increases year after year. This year, the biggest increase that you'll see, and really the primary driver of the increase in total expenditures, is related to transfers out. And the biggest change in the transfers out is the transfer for the new fire truck that was purchased. All right. The next slide is showing your fund balance trend over the past several fiscal years, and then what the budgeted fund balance would be in 2024, all the way on the right. So you'll see year after year, there are modest increases in the general fund fund balance. This year in particular, there was $120,000 increase in that fund balance. And nearly all of the fund balance is unassigned, which means it's available for any potential use. So this in particular, I wanted to give huge credit to you all, as well as the management team, for keeping an eye on expenditures and really budgeting appropriately to make sure that in rough times when property tax revenue potentially could decrease, that you still are setting yourselves up to be in a good position to be able to continue to pay your upcoming costs without having to issue any debt. All right. And then the very last slide that I wanted to cover, switching gears from the general fund over to the water and sewer fund. So the graphs on this slide are showing two different trends. The blue line in both graphs is looking at your working capital. So that would be your current assets less your current liabilities. And that would represent the measure of resources available to fund operations. The other line that you're seeing in this graph, that orange line, that is showing your operating income. So essentially, the operating results for each... For the years going across the graph for each of the funds. So the sewer fund specifically did have an operating loss in every year that's presented here, but that's after taking into account the depreciation. So it's not necessarily what your operating cash flow would look like in that fund because you do have the non-cash expenditure for your depreciation. And then if you look at the working capital in the sewer fund, it did decrease slightly this year. However, it is still in a healthy position. I would say the same thing is true for the water fund. If you look at the trend of your working capital in the water fund, you'll see a slight decrease this year as well. But again, it's still at a pretty healthy position. So no cause for concern. And then the water fund does have positive operating income. So again, all of the revenue coming in in the water fund is able to pay for all of the operating expenses in that fund. So really, the big takeaway in the water and sewer funds that I want to mention here is that based on the results over the past few years, they're both in a good, healthy position. So they've both been able to pay for any capital expenditures and any operating expenses without issuing debt. So as a result, they are in a pretty healthy position. So those are the main highlights we wanted to present from the financials. I believe you all received the full packet of financial statements. So if you have any questions on the financials, we're happy to answer any questions.
Council, have any questions?
I'll turn it over to Keith to finish up.
Thank you.
Just briefly close with the four-page letter addressed to city council, our end of audit letter. This is basically a follow-up on the communication we emailed to the entire city council at the start of the audit, laying out our plan for the audit. And I'm happy to say, everything went according to plan. There's no major exceptions or internal control-related matters that we need to bring to your attention. So while that doesn't give us a lot to talk about this evening, I don't want it to go sort of underappreciated or unnoticed what a tremendous accomplishment that is. It's increasingly more difficult for communities to have a clean audit report like this, particularly ones in which there are no segregation of duty issues due to staffing shortages or people doing incompatible duties, or even just if we find significant adjustments as part of the audit. Even if management posts those, we're typically required to bring those to the board or council's attention. We don't have any of those items today. So really, it is about as clean and straightforward an audit as we can perform, despite new accounting standards coming online every year, the ARPA funding adding complexities to the audit. So there are more and more requirements that Angel in particular is required to comply with, that we have to audit, but still, no major exemptions that we need to bring to your attention. So that's essentially what section one is stating, that there were no disagreements with management, no major findings that we need to bring to your attention. And then lastly, section two are just some fairly minor legislative and informational items that we'll leave with you to look over. But I'll just pause one more time to see if there are any final questions.
Counsel, any questions? We thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive and file the City of Richmond, June 30, 2023, financial report with supplemental information from Plant Moran.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion? Again, we'd like to thank our administration, especially Angel. Great job, John. Hopefully, you're here at least another year for us. You guys keep your hands off her again. I have to remind David about that when I do see him. She used to work for him, and we kind of got her to come this way after she was off for a few years. So... But John, again, good job. Counsel appreciates. Every meeting, we have so much information on what's going on with our, you know, the people's money and where we stand in all of our different areas. And when it comes to the audit, it comes as no real news to us because we see it on a regular basis. They make it so simple for us to understand it. And we'd like to do away with the audits and save a few thousand, but that's okay. But anyhow, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, as Keith mentioned, Angel does a great job, not only during the audit, but all year round, just making sure that all of our things are done properly and throughout the year. So again, big thank you to Angel.
Angel, do you have anything that you would like to say on this? You're glad it's over with?
Glad it's over.
It's like you're on vacation again, right? Sort of, kind of, no. We go to the audience. Any comments from the audience? If not, back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number two is consideration of special event activity, community tree lighting and Santa parade. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving the Santa parade and community tree lighting, along with the Santa parade route, so that we can get that to MDOT. Several years ago, the city moved the tree lighting up to the Veterans Park there between... On Main Street between Water and Monroe. It's been successful there. We did some new events, Christmas Cash and Kris Kringle Market. We moved the Santa to the pavilion area behind Manatchee's Banquet Center. And so brought in food trucks last year. So it's a really nice event. The Main Street between Water and Monroe remains closed after the parade goes through to kind of have a more of a festive atmosphere. The residents can stand in the street to watch the tree lighting. And so a couple of changes this year. We're trying to bring back some outdoor vendors. Teresa has gotten Backyard Living to bring up a couple of their shed... Display sheds to provide some areas for a couple of the vendors to be out of the weather, as well as up to about, I think, seven vendors that we have for that area. And then Melissa has the mobile food vendors again. Limited number there at the back of the parking lot to kind of allow to keep people there, not only prior to, but after the actual tree lighting. So I think the Kris Kringle Market this year will be both inside and outside the banquet hall from like 2:00 to 7:00. And then I think that's when the kind of the food vendors will be there as well. We'll have the burn barrels and transit vans from Richmond on X EMS going back and forth. And so those are kind of some of the changes. One other one is rags. In the past, had their village open kind of the same time when the tree lighting was going on. This year, they've moved that forward to, I believe, 3:30 to 5:00. And then they're going to encourage everyone at the end at 5:00 to come up to the tree lighting and Santa parade. So little tweaks, but very similar to what we've done in previous years. Hopefully, with a little better sound, there'll be a sound system up there for playing music during the 2:00 to 7:00, and then a little better sound for the event itself. And again, Christmas Cash through our Tax Incentive Finance Authority and the Richmond Area Good Old Days Festival. So those people that participate in the Christmas Cash, there's two drawings this year, one for 500 and one for 250. So hope that brings, again, helps get people up there.
Must be there to win.
Must be there to win.
Yep.
But with that, I'm here to answer any questions, as well as Teresa and Melissa.
You guys want to say anything on microphone here for the folks at home?
So since I wrote the letter and made application, I have secured all three of the food vendors that I talked about. So it will be Slaw Dogs, which is basic hot dog, you know, hand food kind of thing. Hummingbird Home will be there popping their kettle corn. So we'll have the sweet smell of kettle corn through the market. And then we've got the Local Hot Cocoa, which is a local girl. She makes a gourmet hot cocoa, white hot cocoa and regular hot cocoa. So they, all three are secured with your approval tonight. They will be available from 2:00. And actually, they're willing to stay kind of as late as the crowd does. So, you know, we're hoping, as a committee, to get people to linger a little bit longer and shop. As a shop owner, we're going to be open as long as there's people there. So all three of the food vendors are also willing to do that, so.
Good. Very good. Teresa, you want to add?
No.
Okay. All righty. We need some motions here. The first one is to approve closure of Main Street for the Santa parade. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Santa parade route along Main Street from Forest to Park Street on Saturday, December 2, 2023, from 5:30 p.m., with the community tree lighting to be held at the Pocket Park on Main Street, and authorize the city clerk to apply for MDOT for the road closure and across-the-road banner.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this? Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We now have approval for the special event application for the vendors. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the special event application for mobile food vendors from Melissa Madrick for three food vendors, two food, one coffee, to be set up in the municipal parking lot from, starting at 4:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, December 2, 2023.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this?
I apologize, that should be 2:00 to 9:00.
2:00 to 9:00?
2:00 to 9:00.
Any audience comments on this?
Coffee.
What did it say?
Hot cocoa.
Coffee. Two food and cocoa.
Yeah.
At 2:00.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We also have one more for the special application for the use of the parking lot for the vendors.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event application from Teresa Maniachi to utilize a portion of the municipal parking lot for up to seven vendors and two sheds to be set up in the municipal parking lot from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Saturday, December 2, 2023.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this? Appreciate all the information that we got in our packets on this. Anything from the audience?
I just have one thing. Just, and I may have put it in here, I can't recall what I wrote. The sheds will come up a little early. You know, I think those are going to come on Thursday or Friday and then leave on Monday. You know, obviously, they're a little bigger, and so it's not just easy to come up. It's not a 10-by-10 pop-up. It's, you know...
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. I want to thank the committee, too. I served on that. It was good to see everybody that was involved in this. We've had three meetings, I believe it was?
Two or three.
Yeah. And, you know, definitely scrutinized everything. So I think it's going to be a good time. Going to be a really good time. Hope everybody comes out that night. Okay, we move on to item number three, consideration of special event request, mobile food vendor, Manesi reindeer event. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider a special event request for one mobile food vendor, Eat 'Em Up Donuts, from the Richmond Flower Shop for their reindeer day on Sunday, December 10. This event is actually... Occurs in two locations. One is at the Banquet Center, where, again, they have kind of vendors inside and, I believe, a petting zoo out back. And then also at the Richmond Flower Shop, where they have a couple of live reindeer for people to come and see. And then also would have the Eat 'Em Up Donuts.
Probably going to be spending a lot of time there, Mr. City Manager.
I'm telling you.
We have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request for mobile food vendor, Eat 'Em Up Donuts, from the Richmond Flower Shop at 69001 Main Street on Sunday, December 10, 2023, from 12:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., in association with Maniachi's Reindeer Day Event.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Discussion? Teresa, did you want to add anything to this?
No. It's always a big thing. Lots of people.
Yep.
All over a thousand people come.
Yeah.
Hopefully, it'll be even bigger this year. It's the new reindeer. My guy, after 20-plus years, has finally retired. So we have a new reindeer. This guy goes a little bit different. Kids will be able to feed the reindeer. He turns 25 cents. Not because of the cost. He doesn't matter for how much his reindeer...
Very good. Very good. Back to the table. Anything? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Motion does pass. Hope for good weather. Item number four is consideration of across-the-road banner for the Richmond Little League. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider an across-the-road banner request from the Richmond Little League for two banners announcing their online registration being open. The banners would go up tomorrow, Tuesday, November 7, through Tuesday, November 21.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make the motion to approve the across-the-road banner request from Richmond Little League for two banners for the registration event, Tuesday, November 7, through Tuesday, November 21.
Support.
Most of them made and supported. Any discussion on this? Any audience participation? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of adopting Resolution 2023-14, Public Act 152. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider adopting Resolution 2023-14, a resolution electing to comply with the provisions of Public Act 152 of 2011. Each year at the beginning of our coverage year for health care, we have to elect to either comply with the hard cap, the 80/20 split, or option three, which is to opt out. We have in the past and continue to recommend this year that we opt out, based on our contract negotiations and the level of participation that we've set through those negotiations.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-14, electing to comply with the provisions of Public Act 152 of 2011, by exercising the city's right to exempt itself from the requirements of the Act for the next succeeding health care plan year.
Support.
Most of them made and supported. Is there any discussion on this? This has been since 2011. It just doesn't seem like it seemed impossible. Seems like we just went all through this a few years ago before COVID. 2011, wow. Okay. Any other comments? Any audience comments? Time flies, huh? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to item number six, consideration of BB Park improvements, drainage. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider approving a drainage project in BB Street Park. Historically, the area in the northwest corner of BB Street Park has been a low spot that has a lot of standing water after rains, particularly in the spring. And so, when we submitted for the Spark Grants through the DNR recently, we had proposed in one of those three grants, installing some drainage that would assist with this. It will alleviate kind of standing water over top of the hike bike path that sometimes in the spring prevents people from utilizing the hike bike path due to the standing water. So, our cost estimate for the total project is, I think, roughly $32,000. That's a conservative estimate, so it may come in a little bit lower than that, but given what we believe, somewhere in that neighborhood, DPW will be performing the work, so obviously, whatever time it takes, it takes. And so, we think that's very conservative, and it should be under that a little bit. One other side benefit of doing this is by, as you can see from the map, we're going to be going along and installing a lot of catch basins. Jim has gone out there in the field to kind of verify tree locations, different instructions, so that the property owners that are on the south side of Madison in this area would have kind of a direct line to connect to the catch basins in the future, should they want to install a backyard drain and connect that drain into one of these catch basins. They had worked with Jim to kind of coordinate that work and make sure that they're connecting where we would like them to. It's possible that some of this, these drains will alleviate the majority of the flooding in some of these areas. Other yards may need to connect, but I know I'm speaking with the festival, they also have some interest in doing some additional drainage work in that festival field. So, as we discussed at the quarterly roundtable meeting, there were a few of the projects that got submitted in the grant for the Spark Grants that we did not receive funding on. There was only one approved in Macomb County, unfortunately. And so, we kind of take, took some of those projects and are working on getting them in front of council now. And so, this is kind of the first of those that will be coming to you. Again, if approved, then we'll draft a letter and probably send a copy of this map and a letter of how if they want in the future to connect, those residents would be able to.
Very good. Thank you. Jim, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I don't, thank you.
Pretty much covered it, Denny.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed drainage project on the north side of BB Street Park with estimated amount of $32,392.87, and direct administration will move forward with the project the fall of 2023.
Second.
Most of them made and seconded. Discussion. Something that we've worked on for quite some time, and was hoping those Spark Grants would help us, but we had to wait some time before we found out that we didn't get those, like everybody else in Macomb County, other than the combination down towards the city. So, I appreciate the, you know, we definitely have a problem back there, and I appreciate the administration jumping on this after our meeting that we had. I really appreciate it, John. I was just wondering if we should go out for bids, but since it's our DPW, we're trying to keep you honest, this, okay? All right, all right.
He's got, he's already paying.
Oh, yeah, he's already got.
That's not even there.
Yeah, there you go. He's going to charge for him. That's a ghost employer, right? Yeah, yeah, yep. So, any other comments? Much-needed work. Any audience comments? I know Teresa's going to enjoy, yeah, you won't have that waterfront property down to where you're at anymore, more than likely. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Frank Mighty, you can't cut them. We just learned that. We were just at a seminar, you can't cut those, you know? All right, back to the table. If there's nothing else, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay, we move on to miscellaneous matters from the City Manager. Sir?
Just a reminder that City Hall and Library, DPW, Rec Department, we close on Friday in observance of Veterans Day. Also, would just like to thank Teresa at an earlier Christmas meeting, Christmas committee meeting, we talked about trying to do something on Small Business Saturday. So, I believe on Small Business Saturday, we're going to have a Grinch that will be kind of visiting as many area businesses as they can from like 10:00 in the morning to noon with some gift bags. We're going to be sending out a letter to business owners, letting them know that they can contribute little items to put in the bag, so that they'll be going, you know, just to different businesses, kind of spreading the cheer. And then, from, I believe, noon to 2:00, 3:00, they'll be at the Richmond Flower Shop, and if you want to bring your dog or pet up there to get a picture with the Grinch or your child, they can do that on Small Business Saturday. So, again, just trying to kind of expand offerings here during the holidays.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Moving on, council comments? Michael?
Nothing today.
Dennis?
Nothing.
Rob?
Also.
John?
Also.
Lee?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jim?
All good.
Okay. Well, we have a mitten tree collection going on at the Lois Wegder Memorial Library, started on the 1st of November, it'll end on December 11. They are looking for new gloves, mittens, scarves and hats for children and adults for the holiday season. Questions, 727-2665. The Parks and Rec will be holding on November 18. Registration begins at 5:30, tournament begins at 6:00. This is the Uker Tournament, yeah, Uker Tournament, being held at the Odd on Main Street. Seating is limited. Again, to get a spot there, get a hold of our Parks and Rec at 727-3064. And this one's a, we just got this, this is a little bit different. It's called an ACP Basics Workshop. It's supported by AT&amp;T. My understanding is, we have some limited information here, but you don't have to have AT&amp;T. If you have broadband, and you could qualify for up to $30 off your monthly broadband bill. There is going to be a meeting on this, a workshop, at the Lois Wegder Memorial Library on this Thursday, November 9, at 1:00. Again, more information, 727-3064.
That's the Rec Center, I think it's the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
727 book.
Yeah, 2665.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, my mistake. All right, we go to the calendar. Today being the 6th, we do have an election tomorrow from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. We will be voting in both in this building, City Hall here on 32, and also at the Community Center on Festival Drive, for those that live south of, or I'm sorry, north of Division.
North of Division.
Will be at Community Center. Everybody else will be here at City Hall. And that's from 7:00 to 8:00. We have council election, we have three councilmen up. We're happy that they are returning again this year. There is nobody running against them, and we appreciate the fact that they're coming back for another four years on our city council, so we can all work together. Planning Commission will be being at 7:00 right here at City Hall, Thursday, the 9th. And as mentioned by the City Manager, City Hall, Library and Community Center will be closed for the Veterans Holiday on Friday and Saturday. Reopen on Monday. City Council will have an organizational meeting on the 13th. That's a, for the selection of mayor and mayor pro-am and a few other things, I believe we do that evening, and that's all we do. That's at 8:00 right here at City Hall. And that's it for now. Yeah, that's it for now. Is there anything else that we need to add to the calendar? Is there any other business of the City Council? If not.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most of them made and supported. There's no discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thank you for being with us tonight.